Adios, uh, video is. Moving on. And we're recording.
All right, very good. Sam, could you please call the meeting to order for me?
I'd quit notice this meeting was given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act by transmitting the meeting notice to the official newspapers, providing a copy of the agenda to the newspapers and posting a copy of the agenda at Borough Hall.
Thank you, Sam. Could I have a roll call, please?
Dr. D.
Here.
Herb?
Here.
Howard? Meyer? Renning? Here. Tomco?
Here.
Branson?
Here.
Demblicher? Echol?
Here. Uh, I do want to note that um both uh the mayor and the vice chair were caught out at work and uh Marty Howard is on vacation in New York at the moment. So um they were all excused from the meeting. Uh, could I have to move on to approval of the minutes of the regular meeting?
I'll move the minutes.
Thank you. Jean, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion of the minutes as presented? Hearing none, could I have a vote, please?
Dr. D?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Redding? Yes. Tomco?
Upstate.
Branson?
Yes.
Echo?
Yes. Uh, moving on to the public comment portion of the meeting, uh, there is no one here, but I will announce we are opening the public comment portion of the meeting. Seeing no one here, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting. Moving on to the resolutions, we have resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve regarding the application of Holly low for C variance approval. Lot twelve, lot three, you all have the resolution in your packet. Um, do we have a motion to?
I'll move it.
Thank you. Do we? Thank you. This is going to be a record breaking meeting, I can tell. Um, uh, could I, is there any further discussion of the resolution?
Only those who voted in favor may vote on the form of the resolution.
Thank you.
Oh, really? Oh, this is interesting.
It is interesting. Uh, could we have a vote, please?
Dr. D?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Tomco?
Uh, Upstate.
Branson?
Yes.
Echo?
Yes. Uh, moving on to new business, uh, environmental commission liaison, um. Where we have one stepping down, Manette will be stepping down, has stepped down in the environmental commission. Um, and I am in a conversation with, I've had conversation with one of you already who has declined that position um due to personal uh dizziness. Um, that's a terrible phrase. Um. If anyone is interested in becoming the environmental commission uh liaison, uh, please talk to me, otherwise I should be talking to you, searching you out individually and talking to you. Um. But we should try to fill that probably in the next thirty days or so, so that we have that position filled.
Do you just want to give a brief summary of what the responsibilities is supposed to be? Hold on.
I can do that.
Jean was the environmental commission for, why don't you go ahead and do that, and Manette will will chime in and um.
So there's a law, a New Jersey law that establishes environmental commissions. What their role is intended to be is to inform land use planning and decision making, which is why they are a body of the planning board. Um, and uh they don't have any kind of legal standing.
They are not a body of the planning board.
They're a.
They're a commission.
A commission. Um, our environmental commission, which is great, also has taken on just by their own initiative, a lot of responsibility for maintaining lands, uh, open lands in the borough, like they fix trails, they, you know, mow areas, I mean, that, so they take on things that are not like the minimum elements of what an environmental commission legally um does, but they're um, they have a lot of energy and enthusiasm for that part of the work to present for them.
I think you've something up perfectly. Um, they planted trees, we planted trees in Borough Park, which you were part of as well. Um, they meet once a month here at seven o'clock, usually an hour long meetings are. Um, yeah.
I would love to see them do a little bit more of the traditional environmental commission stuff too, in terms of advising this body, and I guess even council, I think they're legally allowed to advise. Um, I think it's partly who is active in the commission, which is, you know, what what they kind of focus their energy on. Um, there is an association of New Jersey environmental commissions that does training, um, provides guidance. Um, so there's opportunities to go to virtual and in-person trainings, it's an annual conference. They lobby even.
And Jack, and Jack was behind the 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 plastic bag man, for example, in the state. But at at the end of the day, the the liaison to the planning board is a voice, so that that there there is a voice going back and forth between the planning board and the environmental commission, so that they know what we're up to and make sure that they know applications that are before us that they might want to have commentary on. And we know what they're up to, if there's any concerns or issues that they want to bring to us. So this is, this is a um uh, a conduit for communication between the commission and the planning board.
And in other parts of the state, like in urban communities, the environmental commission may be more focused on issues associated with like toxics and contaminated sites and things like that, that's not really been the focus in um in Frenchtown.
Through my work, I actually work with several different environmental commissions and they, what they address is individual environmental commissions is all over the board. Um, so um.
Right now, they're very focused on stormwater.
May, yes. Um, you know, and and tree replacements and all kinds of, it's, so different groups are focused on different things, but that's, but that's it in a nutshell. Any questions, anyone?
It's a great group of folks.
Uh. Anybody interested? Talk to them. Uh, or I'll track you down. No, um. There has been a suggestion, um, there's been raised from several different um corners uh for us to change our meeting time uh from uh from seven thirty back to seven o'clock. This would put us in line with council, this apparently would put us in line with ninety-nine percent of the planning boards across this, ninety-nine percent of the planning boards across the state of New Jersey, apparently meeting at seven thirty is um according to Steve, and I think Darlene also has told me that this is a very oddball thing.
I think I'm.
The motion.
Would you like a motion?
Well, I, 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 we have to talk process a little bit first. Um, but yes, emotions, emotions coming. I did talk to uh both uh Brad and John Demblicher, who were not able to be here this evening because one of the concerns, this was, I think, raised many years ago. And the concern was getting the people who work out of town.
Yeah, yeah.
For the day, back in time for the meetings, uh, but they are both perfectly comfortable with it coming in alignment because they're two of the ones that often get, as they did this evening, get caught out at work. Um. The, you know, we are already, and and Steve, I'm sure will chime in on this, but we are advertised to meet at seven thirty through the end of the year. Um. This would be something that we would be putting in effect in twenty twenty-six. Um. And I did want to check, and I did not get a chance to dig into this, would we have to change our bylaws as well? Because I know our bylaws state that we stop taking testimony at ten thirty, but I think we would probably also, I think our bylaws probably will also say that we start our meeting at seven thirty.
You'd probably want to change that to ten o'clock anyhow, which is what most of the boards that I appear before say that if you have a meeting time at seven, ooh, everybody's smiling. And you take new testimony after ten o'clock.
Excellent, uh, because I was going to point out that that the the one downside of this, which I believe Sam had pointed out, is this would potentially make our meetings longer. Um. Uh, Steve, can you um guide me through the the change, how we would go about? Um, we we don't have to do that this evening, but how we would go about changing the bylaws and making all this happen if it is the will of the board?
Sure, I mean, the the bylaws, you can, I I actually have to take a look at your bylaws to see if there's any specific provisions about when and how they can be amended. Um. That you can probably do as part of your reorganization meeting in January, and and it would be my recommendation, even though you could technically change the meeting time uh mid-year, it's probably not a good idea to do that, only because you had your reorganization meeting, you set the time uh for all of the meetings for this year to be seven thirty, and people can rely upon that, even though it's perfectly legal to change it mid-year with the appropriate notice, but it it just lends itself to confusion and it's, most people rely upon the reorg minutes to find out when the meeting times are, if they really are curious about it, so.
And cha- and changing the time for the rest of the year would also require us to, it would actually cost us a few nickels because we would actually have to notice it.
Yeah, you'd have to notice.
Yeah, so I don't think this is an emergency situation.
Yeah.
Um. So now I would entertain a motion, I would think, Jean.
I would happily make a motion to change our meeting time starting in twenty twenty-six to seven o'clock, along with any necessary changes to bylaws.
That's very good. Is there a second?
I'm glad we seconded.
I have a second. A lot of happy, happy motions here. Are there any further comments on that?
I wish I was a good member.
We'll say with kids and bedtime and stuff, it would be a little harder for me, but.
Cause your kids still go to bed very early. Theoretically.
Yeah, I mean, you know, around now.
Yeah. Well, you you'd already be here anyhow, so um. Yeah, it wouldn't happen. We'll just have to have our meetings really efficiently, get them done, so you can get home for bedtime. They will get older and bedtime will slide.
Yes. And then it'll be like midnight.
All right, but are you, are you still good with this time? Uh, if there's no further comment, could I have a vote, please?
Dr. D?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Tomco?
Yes.
Branson?
Sure, yes.
Echo?
Yes. Um, so we will move forward on how to, how to get that all done. Um. Sam has reused, raised the idea of us increasing escrow fees again. The last time we did an escrow fee review, which in fact was the only time I ever remember being done, and the entire time I was on the board was in twenty twenty-one. Um, and I still have those files, I'm just going to forward them to Sam, she's going to get similar um updated com- comparable escrow fees from the surrounding municipalities like we did last time, uh, because she's using a lot of her time and energy uh chasing after people to re-up their escrow over and over and over again, and it's not fair for applicants to think that they can get through with a complex application with a a small escrow fee when they're, they're like, well, I wouldn't have done this if I'd known, and and any, any excess escrow, we will give back to them, you know, if it's not used, we give it back to them, but it it becomes a I remember having this conversation back in twenty twenty-one with Brenda, it becomes this nightmare scenario for the borough clerk to keep harassing and pestering people for escrow. Um. Last time we reviewed it in twenty twenty-one and we updated in June of twenty-two. So um I will get those files to Sam, Sam said she would happily track down those numbers for us, so we can discuss it and figure out how we want to change our escrow fees. It, those of you who were not here for the review in twenty-one and twenty-two, um. It is, we are comparing apples to oranges, because every municipality sets their escrow fees differently. So, and and their procedures and because their ordinances are different, so there there is some interpretation in there. Um, but we we wrestled back to the ground pretty well in twenty-one, so I think it should be rather easier this time, assuming that the surrounding municipalities haven't changed their base ordinances significantly. So it should, we should be able to see what numbers they are currently using, so that we can compare them and at least be somewhat in line, because we don't want to be crazy out, out of line one way or the other, which we were, we were very low in silver escrow fees in twenty twenty-one, which is why we brought them up.
And in the past few years, things, the situation has changed so much that, like, what has changed so much in the past few?
I don't think we raised them high enough in twenty twenty-two. I I think, I think we 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 were feeling so bad about raising them, I think we did not raise them sufficiently. Um, so I don't think everything's a whole lot expensive. I think we were just being overly cautious. And we need to look at this again. Um, if nothing else to make Sam's live, please.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, awkward, but also seven hundred and fifty hours really doesn't get you too far, we can have three professionals who have meetings, they review everything, you know what I mean? Their hours, worth their weight in gold, however, that seven fifty literally is seven hours, three professionals gone.
Yeah. All right, so uh Sam and I will work together on that. Sam, if I forget to send you those files, please, um. Permission to now granted.
You got it.
You want to book Ted, he may be able to get you the ones from our other towns to take a look at.
Moving on to old business, uh, we have ordinance nine three six, this is the temporary sign ordinance. Um. Uh, for master plan inconsistency determination. So uh, for those of you that that may or may not remember that we do it this way, we are not asked to determine if the ordinance is consistent with the master plan, we are asked to determine if the ordinance is not inconsistent with the master plan, because who doesn't like a good double negative? So uh, this is in fact the sign ordinance that we recommended to them, the emergency sign ordinance that we we recommended to them last month, um, which Steve wrote up, uh, and council um uh, had no comment on it and simply that that they they, I believe, a public hearing is that.
They probably introduced it on first reading.
Thank you. Um, and then they sent it back us, back to us for inconsistency determination. So um, since we wrote it in the first place, um, I was wondering if there would be a motion to determine that is not inconsistent with the master plan.
That's correct. The motion would be to determine that the ordinance is not inconsistent with the master plan and to report that back to the borough council.
I'm having to make such a motion.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jean.
I I did a few quick questions.
Yes.
Um, so under section two, seven B, they should, would we norm, would there normally be language, this is where it says such signs may be illuminated only if the illumination is determined to be necessary by the zoning officer? Is it um typical for there to be like a sentence or something as to the standard by which the zoning officer makes determination about necessary? Do I need or a clause or something?
You could um be more specific on it.
It just whether that's helpful to the zoning officer as opposed to, you know, why did you decide something was necessary or not necessary?
Yeah, I mean, if, I think the goal was to make this as uh flexible as possible for zoning, like to sort of make that determination, but certainly if, you know, the board or borough council wants to make it more specific, that that would change the introduction and after reintroduce.
Right, right, okay.
And start over again.
Let's see, I suppose, that's fine.
So, so this will be for nine months?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I'll, I'll be talking about that in a few minutes, but this is, this is a temporary.
Okay, and then under um seven D number five, I think it probably wants to read directory sandwich boards shall be brought indoors at night and or during inclement weather, it's not only during inclement weather, right? Or maybe just and during inclement weather. For me?
Yeah, and slash or quickly.
Can we, uh, can we do that without having?
Oh, sorry.
Disrupting the timeline?
You could probably make that ministerial change and slash or and recommend that.
Amendmentist.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And make that recommendation to the borough council as part of your motion.
Okay.
To make that one change.
Cause it's not a substantive.
Right.
Change.
Yeah, and I think it's with the intent.
Yeah.
Okay. That was it.
All right, uh.
Think you had a motion.
We had a motion and a second.
Yeah.
Now we have an amendment to the motion.
Is the, the, the second okay with the amendment?
I'm okay with the amendment.
Is the motion okay with the amendment?
Sure, all right. Very good, I was pretty sure I had to check that, yes?
Yeah, I mean, we could do it in Robert's rules and vote on the amendment first if you really want to, whether you want to.
I think we can sort of roll it together. I think we're good with that. All right, uh, if there's no further comments. Good, I have a vote, please.
Dr. D?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Ready? Yes. Tomco?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Echo?
Yes. Affordable Housing Committee update. Uh, Jean, I I didn't tell you that I wanted you to talk about it, but you want to give us a little outline of what's going on? Well, I will, I will speak first.
Aging and place for affordable housing.
Oh, sorry, I I I jumped forward to aging and places, to aging place, I was, I was.
Okay, so um the borough received its award, we finally got the award letter, um, and um.
With a specific amount of money, as opposed to just some.
Like, you're getting some money, so that's a seventy thousand dollar award. It took the state so long to get the towns, the seventeen app, uh, seventeen awardees. It took the state so long to get to, originally it was going to be like an eighteen month project, now it's a twelve month project, so it has to end by June thirtieth, twenty-six. Um, and um, and so just as a refresher, um, what this involves is, it's a planning process, right? So planning for understanding how to ensure that Frenchtown's age friendly. Um, and it means uh participating, um, age friendly is this nationally big initiative of National ARP, and there's a, a network here in New Jersey. So at some point, the council will need to pass ordinance joining that ARP state network. The nice thing about it is being in the network means that you have access to uh this portal where you can go in and say, hey, has any town done X, Y, and Z? Um, and you can hear about towns in New Jersey and what they've been doing. Um, so the obligations under the grant are to create a committee um that will um participate in the age friendly network, that will do a lot, a lot of this is about listening, right? Listening to older residents about what are some of the challenges that they face. Um, and then um sort of dusting off some of the demographics, although I think a lot of that's been done in, by Darlene when she put together the housing element. Um, and then um to um do a little bit of research as to what are some um examples of towns like Frenchtown that have done things, you know, so smaller towns um that have done things to address the kind of challenges that we hear, and then you put together an action plan. Um.
But we're gonna, we're gonna be hiring.
And so the intent um is to bring in um a, a, I think we called it a project coordinator. Um, and what we're looking into is whether um we can do that through the state university, so that we don't have to go through a very long drawn out competitive bid process, which would elongate this even more, so I'm waiting to hear back on that. Um, and so um there were eight organizations in uh that allowed them to be identified as partners on the project, so at uh the mayor and Randy's request, I've reached out to see if they would like someone on the committee, and then there were a couple of the places that seemed logical to participate, like um Go Hunterden, because we know that transportation will be a big issue, the medical center. Um. Uh, and so, uh, but Brad would really like to try to keep it like manageable, because this is kind of a committee that'll probably meet once a month and spend a lot of time listening um to residents in town through faith-based organizations, through, you know, other meetings. Um, so the goal is by the time we meet next month is to have a committee um and to have a project coordinator to get this started.
And Brad, Brad is working on that, they've, they've got these letters going out. Um, I'm, I'm having just gone through what I went through with my brother, I'm seriously considering being the planning board member on the committee.
Yeah.
Um, because I uh dealt with a lot of elder care issues in a very compressed period of time.
And one of the things that Randy and John Demblicher have brought up, uh, as this has come up, is that there have been cases, uh, so this is how this process works, there have been cases where thing, where applications came to the planning board, where um and uh an older resident needed to, or or a sick resident needed to install some kind of equipment or device or ramp or some, something in their home. And it was a very protracted and expensive process, and so the um, uh, so we know that that's an issue, right? Um, and so um it just in working on this, I reached out to the age friendly network, uh, both the New Jersey Age Friendly Network and the National Age Friendly Network and said, has anybody in New Jersey done anything like this? Cause then we can look at their ordinance. Um, and the answer is no. Um, the answer was, Sausalito, California done something similar, they seem to be the go-to, so, you know, we'll get their ordinance, and what's nice about the grant is that then it does include um resources for like Darlene to write an ordinance for us um and charge that as opposed to charge to um the boroughs, the counts. So, so that's kind of how this goes, but.
So we're trying to move this forward very quickly, because the, the timing of the, 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 the letters going out may make the whole thing very compressed, so.
Yeah.
Um, we're gonna try to keep these wheels moving as quickly as we can. Um.
It'd be nice if we could do a lot of listening this summer.
Yeah.
So.
Uh, I imagine, you know, cooling, cooling centers are.
Cooling centers, yes, yes, and we're assuming, because I think Randy, just from things you've heard and that the mayor's our trans, we're expecting transportation to be a good issue and probably access to healthcare.
Uh, so that's that, uh, affordable housing committee update, affordable housing, we've got, you know, but we, we should be good. Um, I mean, we just talked about this a little bit uh informally before the meeting started, but we, we have, you know, we've got our, our plan in place, it was ahead of the June thirtieth deadline. There's a forty-five day.
I believe it's forty-five.
We believe it's a forty-five day um challenge period that comes up now, um, so we will see.
And challenged by who? Anybody?
Yeah.
So uh, we'll, we'll see where that goes. Um. You know, our planner is not here this evening, joining us, uh, nor is her uh associate, one, because we didn't think we really needed them. Um, for the agenda this evening, but also because last time I talked to Darlene, which was just a few days ago, she still had eight public hearings left to go, so um, the planners in the state are all running at full tilt at the moment, and uh, uh, night has off to both um uh, the Borough of Frenchtown, the Frenchtown Planning Board, as well as our planners. Um, getting this all done in a timely fashion, so that we're in, we're in good position.
Actually, I'm just looking at something quickly online, they say the deadline is August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, for interested parties to challenge the validity of a municipality's housing element and fairship law.
So that's, okay.
So that's sixty days after June thirtieth, basically.
Fifty days, all right.
Yeah, I think the clock starts running on June thirtieth.
I think it does, too.
Yeah, that makes.
That we filed in early June.
All right, well, we shall see where this all goes, but we're, we're in as good a shape as we could put ourselves in at this point. Um. Has anybody else have any other comments or questions about the affordable housing situation? Right now, all right, uh, moving on to vouchers. Uh, we have list of vouchers. Uh, it is worth. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, John.
Thank you, John. Uh, if there are no questions on the vouchers, could I have a vote, please?
Dr. D?
Yeah.
Herb?
Yes.
Um, Ready?
Yes.
Tomco?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Echo?
Yes, and it is worth noting just uh for the information of the board, um, that all uh efforts in any way, shape or form on the striker application have stopped because he passed away suddenly.
Oh, no.
Nuts. Um, so um we were alerted by his, his uh daughter um to just stop anything. Um, so we didn't incur any further costs.
It was a real shame.
For that, that was a real shame. Um, but if in case in, in um weeks coming, if someone wonders just what's going on with this striker application, that's what's happened there. Um. On a correspondent council represent report and other related items, I had several things to throw in here, John, if I can go first, if that's good with you. Um. Ah, yes, um, sorry, I was trying to read my own handwriting. Uh, one, um. I am going to be standing up a sign committee that needs to get started very soon to look at our overall sign ordinance, including the emergency sign ordinance we just passed, because we now have a clock ticking, because I would really, really love by the time this emergency ordinance expires, which will be nine months from July second, if all goes well, then it's council meeting, to have a permanent update of our sign ordinance. We have tried to do this several times over the last couple of years, over the last ten years. Um, and we have run into uh uh problems which, uh, what COVID was a big problem, no one really wanted to enforce any sign ordinances during COVID because our businesses were struggling. Um, but uh we, we need to um. We have several outdated things, um, we have things which have not been addressed over time. Um, and uh whatever the committee is, I will dig out all my notes of all the things that have come up, the last two rounds of trying to redo the sign ordinance and share them gleefully with the committee um to work uh on giving us a, a, an updated sign ordinance, which will include likely include some or all portions of the emergency sign ordinance that that we just went past, but that will be um it'll be refined, we'll have a brand new, clean and shining uh sign ordinance by that time, so um I will be um I'm going to be contacting a lot of people about a lot of things, anybody who wants to be on the sign ordinance committee. It actually is sort of interesting that the biggest problem It actually is sort of interesting that the biggest problem that we have had sometimes in the past was um you really need to uh look at the forest, you know, and and not focus too much on any dual trees. And and we've had that problem a little bit in the past where um uh people were were obsessing over one particular sign or one sign situation. And we need to look at something that will work well for all of the businesses um and situations in the town.
Randy, with the board's decision to I don't know if transfer is the right word, uh, the responsibility for approving them to the zoning officer, is the zoning officer, I think it's a he, right? Um, can they provide input on where there are typical snags along the way or complaints?
Well, usually when there's snags, they come to us.
Oh, okay.
So, so um because um if there's a snag, that usually means the zoning officer to come uh to approve. And then they come before us and then we just go with that snag.
I just didn't know if he or she like has this running list of.
I know, it's actually a good idea. Um, and and the sign committee should probably um at least reach out once to the current zoning officer and just ask if they have a list of items in the current ordinance, which is unclear, because there it this allows us to do a a to really clean up the sign ordinance quite a bit. Um, so that's gonna be coming. Um, there's also, um, and I'm somewhat overdue on this, but uh the technical review committee must be stood up for an application in the town. There are several people on the board that have to recuse themselves in the technical review, which is going to make it um interesting. Uh, I I I can't mention what property it's involved with, can't I?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so it's the Frenchtown Presbyterian Church. Um, which means, um, I'm pretty sure Jean cannot be on the technical review. I can't be on the technical view. I don't think Brad can be on the technical review. Um, I honestly, since I haven't actually been to that church for quite some time, I don't know how many other people in town are members, are you a member too? Okay, you were guessing. I thought I was like, so.
Wondering how close Second Street I am to it.
Yeah.
No, you're probably far enough away, because you're Second Street, that's, that's fourth. Probably good.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause you're too close.
Too close.
Uh. Well, it's gonna be a small club. Um, and many of you have not sat on a technical review, so we'll probably have Steve give you a little bit of input when we film from that committee on what a technical review does. But in a nutshell, and Steve will correct me if I'm wrong. Technical review is when an applicant comes before us because they have an idea of something they would like to do. And they need a little bit of guidance on how they might go about it, what kind of problems they might run into. The technical review committee does not speak for the full board. The technical review committee can't say, oh, yes, wonderful idea. I'm sure the board will approve it. They can't do that. You know, they say, well, you know, you're gonna need some variances. You're gonna need this. You're gonna need, you might want a planner. You know, those kinds of things, and give them some insight into um uh how uh what they're planning to do fits or does not fit with the underlying ordinance and.
John Demblic would be eligible. He's not a member.
I think John Demblic, apparently he did go to that church many, many years ago, briefly.
But I don't believe ever.
No, but I think, I think John can be on it.
Yeah.
Um, I already rolled this past him. So um, and and this is somewhat overdue, so I'm gonna try to uh uh stand up this committee very quickly, because quite frankly, they came to us right when we were um in the teeth of affordable housing. Um, and at the end of the day, we might want a little advice from the planner on the question they're putting forward. So um I will be, I'm gonna be, man, you guys are gonna be so, you're gonna be just like blocking me on your email screens, but yes, um. And we also had a couple of questions that were raised um by uh Martin. I had a conversation with Martin uh before he went on vacation. Um, and um, and then I reviewed his suggestions with Steve and got some input from Steve. So um I'm gonna have Steve, I'm gonna outline what the points were. I'm gonna have Steve sort of um repeat what he said to me. Um, but the two uh outstanding things that Martin suggested um that haven't already come up, he also talked about, he was one of the many people who wants us to move our meeting time to seven. But one was when we have applications, um, since we separate uh when we have a public hearing, we separate the input from the public during the public hearing uh in both comments and questions. He was curious to know uh if we could allow comments to come in through Zoom. Since they're only commenting, they're not actually asking a question, they're not expecting an answer, could we have them comment via Zoom?
Yeah, and the answer is no. Um, and the the reason for that is that whenever there's testimony or evidence being presented to the board, it has to be under oath and the it has to be able to be cross-examined by the board and the applicant and the applicant's attorney. So uh it's just like any other situation where somebody tries to submit correspondence without being in attendance at a meeting or present a petition to the board. The board secretary can say, okay, I'm putting this in the file, uh but I'm not distributing it to the board members because it's not capable of being cross-examined at the time of the public hearing.
Um, so again, this is because we're suit of judiciary and we don't watch television procedures in 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 courtrooms and and nobody, nobody sends in comments by text. You know, when someone's testifying, so um.
People don't appreciate that. We're a quasi-judicial.
Yeah.
Body and they don't appreciate that you need to present evidence in person or testimony.
And that's why um both Ted and I are kind of a stickler on the procedure when it comes to a public hearing before the board. Where if members of the public want to ask a question of a witness, that first they're only supposed to ask questions of the witness. They can ask the questions, but we're not supposed to testify because they're not under oath at that point. Um, once the applicant has presented all of their testimony, then it's opened up to the public to present their testimony before the board where they get sworn in. And then the applicant or their counsel can actually question the member of the public who wants to provide testimony or evidence. So that's why we break it up that way, that first somebody asks the questions and at the end, then they present the testimony.
Now, at council meeting, it would be different. Like, when we have a public hearing, at a council meeting, we're not swearing people in and technically, maybe you could have comments over, you know, over a channel or a Zoom.
It's a little bit different for a council meeting than it is for the board where this is, it's kind of like you're a jury.
Yeah.
Um, a judge and jury, where you're, you're listening to testimony and there's a procedure in the way it's supposed to be presented.
We're essentially taking evidence and we make a decision based on what's presented to us in the record.
Correct.
Period.
And quite honestly, if if the board makes a decision and either the applicant appeals or a member of the public appeals, then there is a record.
Right.
Where there's evidence presented and there is a transcript that can be derived from the recording, which the judge, if it's um just on the record below, they just take a look at whether they followed the procedure correctly and whether the board acted arbitrarily and capriciously and followed the law. That's really the the standard for a judge to uh review the the proceedings of the board. Um, which is kind of why I'm a little bit of a stickler when it comes to just ask a question, you can give your testimony later on.
Yeah, those are good points.
So and and uh to and to that point, um, I I told Steve I wasn't gonna pick on him this month, but in August, I was gonna have Steve give us, and 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 we've done this periodically over the years, um, uh, once again, a review of um, how it is um uh, I believe it's ex parte communication with applicants or even, you know, it was, it was quite frankly, one of the things that's very difficult is when you have kids in the school, because, you know, um many of us have had kids in the school and there's the mosh pit of parents. Uh, I, that's a technical term. Make sure you get that in the meeting time minutes. Um, of parents who discuss everything in front of the school. And if you're on the planning board, you can't really engage in discussions of planning board issues with folks. I mean, I I have had to get fairly rude with some folks in town and they wanted to talk to me about an application. It's like, come to the hearing, come to the hearing, come to the hearing. You can't talk to me. I can't be, because if and and I'm gonna have Steve go on and on about this, but we we've had this problem. It's like if if you get too engaged in it outside of the planning board meeting, then you cannot participate in the hearing, um, because you've, you've now.
I did, I think.
It's it's sort of like the 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 jury having a conversation, but somebody beforehand. So I'm gonna have Steve review that in August.
I I think that's great. I I think if it's possible to also add to Steve's on and on, could be to advise us. And I mean, I remember when I went to my planning board training, this came up, but it probably wise to remind us um about roles in terms of being in the public, right? So like when I was on the school board, we would remind school board members that it was the school board president and in some cases, the vice president, who were really the voice of um the board. So it might be helpful to review that as well.
Can you add that into your notes for the uh?
I can. Can I do it in the July meeting? Because.
July, did I say August? Yeah, July, next month.
Because I'm just looking ahead in the end.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it count heads in terms like the.
I I I I don't know why I just jumped August, July, July.
I have one week of vacation planned this year and it's the last week of August.
We'll forget, we'll forget you someday.
That's gonna be filling in for me this.
July, July.
May every, that week.
I I I misspoke. Yes, but that would be, that would be very good also, because it's um um just sort of a reminder, you know, and and we do this periodically. I think the last time I did this, I think Juliet did it.
Yeah, I remember her doing it.
Yeah.
I think we were still in person at the time, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Workover.
Yeah, so it's been a bit.
There's been a change of members since then.
Yeah. Um, and 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 we all get it. We do our 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 planning board training.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
But when you do planning board training, there's stuffing a lot in your ear all at once and talking about C variances and D variances and not explaining what they are and bulk variances and.
And I think I answered the list, the whole thing about, you you know, email communication and, you know, I think Steve certainly tried to clarify that in the email, but not creating interaction.
A violation of the open public meeting.
Yeah, sure.
You wanna give me a list now that um in addition to anything else?
Uh, well, if anybody's got any other brilliant ideas, if you don't get, I can just pass it to me and I'll pass it on to Steve, but I think that's any other, any other things for right now? Add to his list? Just remind us how we're supposed to behave.
Sure, but also if possible, the why behind.
Oh, sure. Yeah, of course.
I still in the back of my head, like, I'm gonna get to that, like FAQ about planning board or something and.
Do you, do you want me to go into the C variants, D variants?
No, 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 no.
Does that make your eyes full?
Yeah, no, 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 no. But no, we don't need to do a whole nother training thing. This is just
Process.
Um, this is process, communication with the public. Um, why it can be a real problem, how it can get us in trouble. Um.
Randy, would you wanna include Oprah?
I was gonna just recommend that to Oprah or Oprah. Yeah.
And open public meetings.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, unless, we're not making you do the whole planning board training all over again. It's just, um.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just the, it's the process. Um, because it's, it's, in a small town, it is very easy to trip up on process. And because a lot of people in the community, they, they, they conflate us with council. So they can have conversations with council members that that we cannot have. Um, otherwise, we we are, we are hopelessly confounded when they come before us. So um, it uh which is probably why a lot of people find um the planning board actually intimidating. You know, because, because we can't have these, these ex parte conversations.
I wonder, since members in the public can be confused by these issues, whether it would make sense to make sure that the agenda notes that Steve's gonna do that, so if there are members of the public who have an interest, they could listen to.
Oh, that's a brilliant idea. Yep, good idea. Um. Alright, so uh, so so that was one. Oh, and the other one uh that um Martin brought up in my phone conversation with him was the idea that all zoning applications that come to the borough all get shared with the planning board.
So permit applications.
I'm like, what? Yeah, forget the ten o'clock meeting.
So, so yeah, so so every application that came before the zoning officer would also come, we would have all those applications also in our packet, so we would see what was going on. So I posed that question to Steve and Steve said.
And Steve said, I'm not a real fan of that. Um, I have one board that has a zoning uh report provided to them from the zoning officer. Monthly as to what uh applications for permits were granted and what applications for per for permits were denied.
It's more like a summary kind of?
Yeah, and they used to have that zoning officer actually attend the meetings. And I'm not a fan of that because it's not really the the bellywick of the board to deal with those issues. It's more of a borough council issue because that's enforcement in um, and if there is an appeal of the zoning officer's action, that comes before the board. So I I'm not a fan of having the zoning officer here or giving a report about their, yeah, what's been granted. Because it's almost like what we were talking about before, an ex parte communication with the board. And if if somebody should appeal something, and it really isn't the jurisdiction of the planning board to be dealing with enforcement issues, whether it's an approval or a notice of violation has been issued on this property, it's not really within your, your, your bellywink.
Don't, don't we do an annual report that summarizes the nature of actions?
We, we, we do. I think I didn't do it this year and I am missing that because my January was a mess, but yes.
But that kind of summer.
I know. It's, it summarizes our variant, the variances given, so that we can keep an eye on, um, and I'm like, no, because I did not do that. Ninety-nine percent.
Are we required to do that or is that just a nice thing?
Um.
You are required to do.
Yes, we are, and and I would.
Not everybody does it.
Um, but that allows us to look for patterns in variances, you know, if we give out and I'm going to exaggerate here, but if we give out twelve variances of the exact same nature.
Yeah.
Every year for three years running, well, maybe then there's something we need to
Yeah.
To amend in our ordinance.
Okay, and make that recommendation to the borough council, governing body.
Right.
Yeah, if, you know, we make four variances in a year or six variances in a year, but it's this and this and this and this, and they're all, and it's variances by the very nature should be, they are an exception to the rule.
Right, right.
So it's okay to have variances.
Yeah.
Be granted, but if you're granting the same one over and over and over again, then maybe you, you you either, you need to decide what you really want to do about that, or the borough does, the the governing body. Um, so um, you know, and and two things that Steve did did not note, but uh, it is my sense um that, you know, the borough is always pinching pennies and our zoning officer does not work for the borough for very many hours during the week and usually barely has time to get around to the applications at hand. And I think adding on a, and by the way, uh, please take some of that time to write us a report. Um, seems uh a poor use of time when there's people that are waiting for the zoning officer to get back to them. So um.
Do you have a sense of what problem?
Yeah, is there something broken that this was intended?
Um, people want to know.
People wanna know what?
Is that information available some other way?
I I don't know. Uh, he, he, he commented and I didn't bring, I didn't bring my exact notes, but um that um that uh I think members of, of the planning board, members of the public, members of the council were frustrated because they didn't know what was going on. I've never heard that before, but this was his, this is what he suggested to me.
And again, I I if the governing body wants to know what their employees, zoning officer is doing in terms of a report, it would be fine for the governing body to do that.
It'd be more appropriate for that report to go to council.
But for the planning board to say, we wanna know what notices of violation you issued or what permits you issued this past month. Um, you know, I I don't think I'm stepping out of my lawyer role, but I don't think it's a good idea from a a planning board, because it's really not your jurisdiction. Some boards do do it, though.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it, because most of that information is public record and because you have to put a building permit and that triggers zoning and.
Well, but some people are not putting up building permits, so that might be one of some of the, so so I don't, I don't know. I mean, I that is.
Some of it is like, we're driving through town and it seems that some expenses too high, right? And like.
The zoning officer does.
Hmm, is that not how that works?
Yeah.
They can issue that, or someone has, you know, I I mean, I think part of the other and and I don't know how this would would affect um public record, but um sometimes the zoning officer is called out because a particular neighbor has chosen to put out a complaint against another neighbor. Um, and that way, both the presumably both names then would be put out in the public record. put out in the public record. Um, and that I I don't know if that would violate any I know, it gets, it seems to get very, very, very slippery and ugly very quickly. Um so certainly if um
And and again, the way I look at it is, it's not really the jurisdiction of this board.
No, because we're not, we're not enforcement.
Right.
Um, that's, that's not what the planning board does.
The zoning officer works for the municipality.
Correct, not for us.
And we're, yeah.
And honestly, you may be charged one time to weigh on whether the zoning officer was correct
Yes.
in issuing whatever uh permit or denial.
Yeah, we we certainly have done.
Yes, when they come for us for somebody wants to appeal the decision, that was on, that's what they're asking us to do.
But then we're working as a, then we're acting as a board of adjustment, because we are a combined board. We are both a planning board and a board of adjustment.
Yeah.
Um, and when when that happens, we are acting as a board of adjustment.
Thank you for explaining that.
So um so I I don't think that that's somewhere we want to go right now. Um, but I I wanted to raise it um because it was a question that uh that that Marty raised in our long conversation. Um and I think that's everything on my list. So John, what have we got from from council?
Okay, uh, we have two things. Uh, first of all, we are in the process of you know, hiring a new deputy or sorry, TPW director. Uh, and we are closing in on a candidate for that position. And the other thing is, there we go. National Night Out is August ninth from two P M. to six P M. at Old Frenchtown Field. This is sponsored by the Frenchtown Police Department and features live DJ, free food and drinks, community resources and giveaways. Touch a truck by the Frenchtown Fur Department, water slide, bounce houses and playful games. Rain date, August tenth. So look forward to that.
Any uh update on the various Pride activities that have been going on during the week? I I know, I know there was supposed to be, I know there's supposed to be kickball on Tuesday night, but I didn't.
Yeah, it got removed because of.
Cause the, cause the, yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, we we approved all of the requests that came before us. Um, but I don't know the schedule or.
I don't know at the time.
It's on our website. If you go on the calendar, each day we'll have whatever event was approved by council, you know?
Yeah, the weather's been really something and and I gather that uh have a lot of people been taking care of, taking advantage of the cooling stations?
No, nobody's come here during the day.
Hmm.
Yeah, Kelly even said if, you know, her hours are later, then when Borough Hall's open, she's like, if anybody's up in Borough Hall, just send them downstairs with me for a couple more hours and nobody's coming here.
That'd be a great thing to add to our listening with seniors.
Yeah, we're a warming and cooling center, right over the young players.
Yeah. And again, uh, and I know this is something a lot of people have been concerned about is communication.
Yeah.
Um, because it's it's uh
Yeah.
Um, get it getting, getting the word out to the people who really need it. You know, um, and and how do we do that with various things? So um do they have anything else, John? Anybody else have anything else for the uh the end bit here? Um, if not, I would entertain a motion. Is there a second?
Sure.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.